Have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any questions on the agenda for the city manager?
Mayor, we do have one item of other business. We have a special event liquor license for an event happening on Auburn University campus. We'd like to introduce that as item number 11A under other business.
Any questions from the council? Okay. Anything else, city manager? Okay. Is there a move to adjourn?
It's moved. Second.
Committee of the whole is adjourned and we will start the city council meeting at seven o'clock. This time we'll call it order. Tonight's city council meeting, February 18th, 2020, and welcome to all of you at this point in time. Lindsey, roll call.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am. Here.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Carson.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Taylor.
Here.
Whitton.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During the committee of the whole, we did add an agenda item that will come in, come at the end of our agenda tonight, item 11A, that was brought forth this afternoon, and we'll discuss that a little bit later. Under mayor's communications, there's a couple of things I'd like to remind the audience about. Auburn 2040 will be kicking off in the month of April, but a bunch of information and announcements about Auburn 2040 is forthcoming here in the next week or two. I encourage you to pay attention closely to the city's website and sign up for e-notify and be a part of the city's social media. 2040 will have eight different teams that will be recruiting citizens from our community to participate in. Each of those teams are captained by three individuals from your community, from this community. I have said all along, this is a community-driven strategic plan for Auburn's future that the staff will support and the city council will participate in, but we will not lead. It will be led by the citizens of our community. It will be quite a commitment of your time if you're interested in doing this. It will be primarily something that will occur during the summer months, but if you want to participate, we'd love for you to consider, but make sure that you understand that you're making a pretty significant commitment. There'll be information about the teams and their subject matter and what they'll be studying will be on the city's website towards the end of next week. We'll give you some time over the weekend to consider that, and then there'll be a time the next week, the first week in March, where we'll ask you to go and sign up. Each of those teams, we'll be estimating, will hopefully have around 20 members, and will begin their meetings after the kickoff, which will be April the 18th, and that is a Saturday morning. So, I was a part, as I've said before, part of the Auburn 2020 process. It was a very robust and rich opportunity for our citizens to form a path and create a path for Auburn's future, and I certainly hope that 2040 is that successful as well. So please be on the lookout for that information. This morning, I was able to go to Ogletree School and speak to the dedicated dads group, and I appreciate them including me today and inviting me out to that, and that was, it's very heartwarming to see about 75 fathers get up really early in the morning and take their kids to school and have breakfast with them and listen to somebody as boring as the mayor talk to them about things. So it was a great, great experience, and I appreciate them asking me. A week from Saturday, the Storybook Farms has their annual chili cook-off. If you don't have anything else to do and want to have some fun and eat some good chili and give to a great cause, I encourage you to participate in that as well. And so those are all from my mayor's comments tonight, announcements. Does anybody else from the council have anything they'd like to share?
I'll be having a Ward Five meeting on March the 2nd at the Auburn Chamber of Commerce from 5:00 to 6:00.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I believe, go ahead, Bob.
Go ahead, chief.
I believe this is Pellet State Director Bill James's last meeting as Pellet State Director, and I just want to say how much I appreciate him. He was my boss for three years, and I was fortunate, my last five years at the city had worked for Chief Frank DeGraffrey and Pellet State Director Bill James, and both of them were, the only knock against both of them were they were just too nice to be doing the job they were doing. Bill's a heck of a guy, and he's a guy I admire, and I appreciate him putting up with me for three years. And you've done well by the city, and the city's very fortunate to have had you here, your leadership, and I mean what I say, you're just too nice of a guy. That's the only thing I can think bad about you. Well, you're kind of tight with the city's money when I want to spend it, but, other than that, much nicer than my current boss, which is now my wife since I'm retired, so... But appreciate you, Bill, and thank you for not only being my boss, but being my friend. I'm honored to have served with you in this, for the city of Auburn.
Bob?
Yeah, I wanted to share with the council and with the public, I was in contact with members of the Lee County Remembrance Project who work closely with the Equal Justice Initiative out of Montgomery, and they've extended to this council an invitation to travel with them to Montgomery this coming Saturday, the 22nd of February, along with Opelika Leadership, Lee County Sheriff's Department, and Lee County Commissioners to visit the Legacy Museum and the National Memorial for Peace and Justice, leaving from 9:00 at the Opelika Courthouse. I will forward you their official invitation. It came in late to me today. And also to the public, there's an invitation extended to you to attend the soil collection ceremony that's taking place at Greater Peace Baptist Church on Jeter Avenue in Opelika. It's an evening of acknowledgement, lament, and reflection as this community remembers four men who were victims of racial terror lynchings in Lee County, and thank you for letting me share this information. I think it's an incredible effort that members of this community in the Lee County Remembrance Project, the type of work they're doing is to be commended and applauded, and thank you for letting me share.
Good. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else from the council have an announcement? Yes.
Yes, I'd like to acknowledge all the concerns and emails and messages I've gotten regarding the intersection at North Donahue and Farmville, and I assure you, they have not fallen on deaf ears. The city is undergoing a traffic study to see what the right solution is for that intersection, and I, as well as many of you, I'm sure, look forward to hearing more from the city on what we can do to improve safety at that intersection.
Good. Thank you, Kelly. Anyone else? I found it interesting today, I was talking to John Wild from the OA Tourism just about some things that were going on in Auburn, and we've got a busy weekend ahead of us. We've got 500 people, students who are coming to participate in an intramural tennis championship that will be held on campus and out at the tennis center. The baseball team has a three-game series against UCF. There are things going on at the Goode Center, the Telfair Pete Theater. There's a huge basketball game that we know about. The soccer team also has a game this weekend. There's a Mardi Gras parade on Saturday. So if you're out and about this weekend, make sure you leave a little early, and we're certainly grateful for all the visitors that'll be coming to Auburn and enjoying our community. If you see somebody that's lost, I hope you'll help them find their way and welcome them to town. Okay? All right. At this point in time, Auburn University Communications.
Good evening. Auburn University Theater wants to invite the public to attend their new production, Bring It On!, the musical. It will run until February 23rd in the Telfair Pete Theater on campus. Auburn University has reached another outreach milestone with the renewal of its Carnegie Foundation Community Engagement Classification, the premier institutional recognition for a university's total outreach in the community. Auburn has achieved this designation through its various community outreach projects such as Project Uplift, which pairs underprivileged kids in Lee County with university student mentors, and through clinics serving the community at the Boykin Community Center, held by students from health-related disciplines. Tiger Giving Day is tomorrow, February 19th. It is a 24-hour university-wide fundraising effort that encourages all with a connection to Auburn to support its projects. Some of the projects highlighted this year include the Sexual Assault Nurse Examiner Program and Stand With Student Veterans. The link to give is aub.ie/sane. Thank you. That concludes this week's report. We're Eagle.
Thank you. We're Eagle. Thank you so much. Okay, now it's time for citizens' communications on items that are on tonight's agenda. Please remember, if you'd like to speak to the council, it is about something that is on our agenda here tonight. We'd ask that you come forward and give your name and address for the record, and you do have five minutes to speak to the council. Anyone? Hold on, Mr. Cosgrove. That gentleman, Mr. Kreider, was up first, so, yes.
My name is Pat Kreider. I live at 2232 Mount Vernon Lane, and I'm a co-owner of the Sky Bar with my brother Daniel. And I want to apologize, the very first time that our thing came up, I got here at the last second because I was a miscommunication. I didn't realize that my representative wasn't going to be here. So I came, and thanks to your video, that was awesome, Mayor, how I was able to go back and see the questions that the council had, so I wanted to address a few of those. Basically, our business, it holds about 2,500 people at one time. We never, unless it's the Alabama game, the Georgia game, for two hours on a Friday night or two hours on a Saturday night, do we ever even get to that capacity. Our place is more of like, it's separated into different sections, and so we learned in the beginning that you can't just have a big room. People will come in and they just don't enjoy unless you have a super national band. So we have different sections, different kind of areas, with karaoke area, we have a dance floor area in the back, we have an upstairs balcony area where you look at, where you can look at the campus with torches. So that's what we kind of, my mom made me, when I came back to Auburn after working at NASA, I quit to come back, and when I told her I was going to open a bar, she said, "It has to be, it can't be a bar. It has to be an entertainment venue." And so my mom was absolutely right, because that's what brings the students in, is our entertainment. And also, we learned over the years, we continually try to get better. Seating is important, bathrooms are important, and so when we redid the Sky Bar in 2012, we were able to refurbish the front of the building and the side of the building, but the back area was terrible. And at the time, when y'all passed, the city passed the smoking ordinance, I was concerned that was going to hurt our business, but that would turn out to be one of the greatest things that y'all did, because it's awesome, because now the smoking is not affecting our regulars, people who don't want to have smoking. But unfortunately, when we put the dumpster out next to our patio on the back, which is where this is right next to, it basically covers, it closes in our back patio. 65-feet dumpster, and then our patio is 85-feet. So what it kind of did, and it's not, we weren't complaining, you know, we needed the trash to be taken out downtown, so we understood that, but now it's kind of, there's no airflow, and everybody goes out there to smoke, just kind of makes it just a little smoking deck, and it's a nice area. And so we just kind of brainstormed, and we thought, well, if we continue our second floor around, you can, then people can sit up top, and then they'll get airflow, but then we'll put a waterfall out there, and we put pictures in there, we want to make a real nice waterfall. We're going to bring in a waterfall expert to make it real nice with a fire fountain. But then also, you can have, you can then see the campus as well from back there. When it's kind of down on the ground, you can't really see the campus. So it kind, this project kind of solves all of our problems at one time, gives us more seating, more women's rooms for women, but also makes it more of a fun place to go. So on the nights when we're not even getting close to maximum, people will want to go up there and see the waterfall and sit down, and it just adds to our business. And so that's kind of what we were hoping to do, and we didn't want to complain about anything more than, it's not about getting capacity, because honestly, when we have the Alabama game, if Alabama loses on the Saturday night, we don't even get to capacity because Alabama fans don't even go out after the game. So it's, it kind of just depends on, if both teams are good, if it's Auburn-Alabama, LSU, those games, if everything works out perfect, a 2:30 game, and then every, and we win, we can have a good time, we can have a good crowd, and then it'll overlap around 10 to 11 at night, and that's where we have to stop wanting one out. But the rest of the whole entire time of our operation, 99.7% of the time, we never even fill up our place. It's just more about, okay, do we open the front section? Now we'll open the side section, and we just kind of feel as the night goes on how big the night will be. So it's kind of a tough business to have, but that's what my brother and I decided we were doing, and we're trying to do the best we can. So I just wanted to let y'all know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to anything that's on our agenda tonight? Yes? Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Cosgrove, and I live at 1927 Watercrest Drive in Auburn Ashton Park area. Beth Whitten in absentia is our ward person. But before I get, before I talk about what I wanted to talk about, just very briefly, I won't use all my five minutes, but I just, I've never had the opportunity to meet, excuse me for using first names, but Connie and Kelly and Brett and Stephen and Bob and Jay. I've known, I've known Beth Whitten for a good while, and I've known Chief Tommy Dawson, who's always going to be chief to me, just like Frank DeGraffrey was always chief to me, all the way to his last breath. And I've known Ron Anderson since we coached kids in flag football out back behind where he's now Frank Brown Rec Center and so forth. But, Mr. Buston, I've never had the opportunity to even talk to you, but I've paid attention and noticed over the years your contributions and so forth, and want to echo what Ron said, really appreciate everything that you've done for this city. The legacy of a person, I think, really has to do with how he or she impacts the lives of the people that he touches, and from afar, I've noticed that. Chief Paul Register, you may not be chief for much longer. I don't know what the role is in the official things, but you're always going to be chief too, and really, really appreciate everything you've done and how you've set the bar. You've taken that baton from Chief Tommy, and you've taken it even further. Yesterday, I got wind of the quarry issue in Opelika, and I sat down and I worked up this little letter, it's actually a three-page letter. It took me a good while to do this, but, and I just, I just did it on my own. I just wanted to put down some of my thoughts and feelings and observations, and then this morning, when I got in my car bright and early, I worked out, out of town, out of state, literally, today, and I grabbed a newspaper out of the newspaper box, and here on the front page, Auburn Set To Oppose The Proposed Quarry, which is coincidentally quite, right in line with the letter that I wrote to ADAM, as well as the chief person, his name is Russell Kelly. But it was all real positive and so forth, but it just is to the point, I dropped some of the copies of this off for you all. I know I got them late to, I believe, the...
We have them right here, if you'd like to have...
They're right here? Okay. Well, I can just, real quick here, I don't expect to read them and so forth right now, but...
Thank you.
You were handed the stack late, I know.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, sir.
I didn't intend to do this, I honestly didn't. Thank you. I can give you all three pages.
Thank you, Mr. Buston.
Are there three pages there?
Thank you, sir.
Irrespective of what I wrote there, I think it's a strong statement from the city of Auburn to show our sister community in Opelika the support. I know some people that are worried to death about that. I've seen when environmental spills and so forth can devastate an area. I first moved here 45 years ago, this past Sunday. Matter of fact, it was February 16th. It was February 16th, a rainy February 16th on Sunday, 1975. Was here for about six years and so forth, met my wife, got married here, moved off to Alaska, and we did a lot of outdoors things in Alaska and so forth. We came back in March of 1989, was in that devastating oil spill, that's to this day has still never recovered from the damage that it did there in the Prince William Sound. When waterways and groundwaters and lakes and tributaries get poisoned, they're poisoned for life. You may come out of it somewhat, but I just feel very passionate about the health and well-being of our environment and how people feel about that. So that's just something I just want to share with you. Yes, I will step back. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
But again, and to the folks that I haven't gotten to know, I wish you well, look forward to supporting you on down the line.
Thank you. Anyone else? There's a number of things on our agenda tonight that have public hearings, so if you want to speak to something that's related to one of those items, the best time's to speak when the public hearing comes up, but you can use your time however you'd like. Yes, sir?
Robert Williams, 8390 South Haven, Mississippi, put in order, item 9C. Is there any other public hearings?
There is a public hearing for that. I would suggest you wait till then to speak to that, but you're welcome to speak now if you'd like to.
I'll wait on that.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hello. Bet y'all are surprised to see me tonight. Name's Ray Huff, 1438 Varner Avenue, living in Auburn. I'm here to talk about, I think it's item 8E on your consent agenda, the hub on campus, although I didn't know it was on campus. It seems to be not on campus. But my question, I got three questions. One is, I didn't realize this was on the agenda, but the 50-foot setback deed restriction, there's been a problem with that versus the 10-foot ordinance requirement by the city. And I didn't know if that'd been settled, that needs to be settled before y'all enter to the development agreement or not. The only reason I know about this is because I've been contacted constantly by the landowner to get this issue settled, and I was surprised to see the city would move forward with a development agreement with the developer when this issue is not settled yet. And maybe it's settled, and I just don't know, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed before you enter into development agreement when this, and maybe it has been, I don't know. That's maybe something they know. If it hadn't been settled, I'd recommend y'all pull that item off the consent agenda and table it and find out what's going on. Concerned about the development, we owned some of the condos, and we managed two condominium properties right across Thomas Street from this proposed development. Sincerely concerned about the road closures, the development into the street on Thomas Street, it's not a major thoroughfare like College or Ross or even Glen, and I don't, our only entrance to these properties is on Thomas Street and Cox Street. And if that's impeded in any way, we're kind of, you know, we're kind of at y'all's mercy. And so I don't know what, I glanced through the development agreement, or printed it out, and I looked, I kind of glanced through it, so I don't know, but I'm concerned about how that's going to flow, because living next to the construction that I've lived with through five or six years now, no consideration was given to our property at all for any of that until fairly recently, and even then, it's kind of a notice thing. Basically, the developer does what they want to do, when they want to do it, in the streets, unbeknownst to the city, and I just would like some, I'd like to see the city really try to help out the existing landowners, because we do have property rights too, just like the new people that are selling, and they've been claiming they've got property rights to sell. We have property rights to exist, I believe. Also, I'm concerned about the tower crane easement. Having extreme experience with that from the first high-rise that was built in town, and having continual interest with the current one currently under construction, construction across the street from our office on Glen, it's a great concern to me. From what I could tell in here, the tower crane easement the city is granting is only going partway into the street on Thomas or on Cox Street or Thomas Street, I think, or maybe it's just Cox Street. But I'm concerned that they're going to misconstrue this tower crane easement to overhang existing structures on other properties, because they're doing it on existing construction right now, and I'm in talks with them regarding that, and so I'd just like y'all to, even if you go forward and consent it and go forward, I would appreciate some consideration, serious considerations from the city on these three issues.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. What else?
Dave Moore, 640 Elizabeth Drive. I wish to speak on Lake Willmore. Is that a open consent?
There is a public hearing on that.
All right, I'll talk to that later.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move forward to city manager communications.
Under city manager's communication, our first item of business this evening is the announcement of one vacancy on the Board of Education. This is a five-year term, which will begin June 1st, 2020, and end May 31st, 2025. The appointment for this position will be at the April 21st, 2020... that item separately?
I'd like to remove item 8B Bravo and 8E Echo. Anyone else from the council who'd like to move anything from the consent agenda? Okay, Mr. Buston, we'll take these one at a time.
Item 8B is a resolution in support of the City of Opelika's position on the proposed quarry.
Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Yes. We have a motion in a second. Questions?
Yes, questions. I noticed that the wording of it is in support of the City of Opelika. I believe in the committee of the whole, last time around, we asked that the resolutions support the citizens of Lee County and Opelika. And some way, Lee County kind of fell off of it. But thinking more about it, I believe it would carry more weight if we mentioned that the citizens of Auburn want this as well. So I would like to propose some changing in the wording. In the first paragraph, the whereas part, say, whereas the city council of the City of Auburn desires to express its opposition to a proposed granite quarry known as Creekwood Resources LLC and support the opposition of Opelika and Lee County citizens. And then in the next-to-last paragraph where it says, now therefore be resolved by the city council of the City of Auburn, Alabama, that the City of Auburn opposes the proposed Creekwood Resources LLC granite quarry and supports the opposition of Opelika and Lee County citizens. The reason I want to do that is I believe that if, not only do we support Opelika, but it is of concern to the citizens of Auburn, particularly those in North Auburn that draw some of their water from the City of Opelika, I think it's important and may carry a little more weight with the regulators if the city itself supports this opposition as well.
Buston, to amend the resolution that's been provided and advertised, how would we go about potentially doing that and approving that?
So Councilman Griswold would make his recommendations for amendments. You need a second, then you vote on those amendments. Then you would come back and then vote on the resolution as amended.
Okay. So, all right. Does anybody else on the council have any questions or thoughts on Kelly's amendments that he has offered?
Can we adopt it tonight with the changes?
You can adopt it tonight with the changes, yes.
Just want to make sure.
Okay. All right. Provide the wording to the clerk. Lindsay. So how would the motion need to be announced then, Mr. Buston, as far as the amended part of this?
Do you have a red line of what you want?
Oh, well, I just...
So basically, he wants to amend it as he read it. So if you all understand how those amendments, as he read it, they would be amended, in my understanding, in two places. As he read it, that is what you're voting on.
Is the council...
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or thoughts from the council? Okay. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amended, the amendments carry. Now we need a motion.
On this item as amended.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve this item as amended?
We approve the resolution as amended.
Second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries as well. Okay.
Item 8E is a development agreement with the hub on campus. And to clarify, that is the name of the development. Hub on campus is the name.
Gotcha. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions, comments?
I had a question on the duration of the construction period. I know the agreement says it's in effect for 10 years, but do we have an idea of how long the community will be disrupted by this construction project?
I'm not sure for sure, but it's probably about a two-year project. But let me, I mean, depending on rain and all those delays, but a project this size is about a two-year project.
That's correct. The developer is present and has signaled to me, these are typical two-year construction, and that's what they anticipate, coinciding usually with the start of the fall semester for completion.
Thank you. And I would suggest that we address Mr. Huff's concerns. Else have anything they'd like to ask of the city manager before we...
Yes, the elevations that we're looking at, are they the elevations after consultation with the Downtown Design Review Committee?
There is still, I believe they have gone down through one iteration with the Downtown Design Review Committee. They still need to go through more. This agreement will make that happen. They do not have to do the Downtown Design Review Committee, but they have offered to do so. By this agreement, we will memorialize that.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Mr. Huff had three different questions. I'm not sure, would y'all like to try to answer those now? Or I don't want to put us on the spot if we're not prepared to answer them, but there was, how would we like to work through that? What would be your suggestion, Mr. Buston?
We can attempt to answer some. Now, most of what Mr. Huff was talking about is not, there is still a whole lot to be done in any type of development. What we're starting out right here is with the development agreement, that is basically our, from the city's perspective, what we want to make sure that we will obtain from them in the way of enhancements to some of the infrastructure that would have to be done in a development like this, that they don't necessarily have to agree to do if they were to do it by right. These are things that we have added on with other developments where we've said, you're going to have some impact on traffic you're going to have, so we need you to do enhancements to an intersection. We want you to enhance safety that you wouldn't necessarily have to do if you had this development by right. So widening the sidewalks, other things like that. Many of the things, I think, or some of the things that Mr. Huff talked about would come at a later date in, as we're going through, but I'm going to let...
Let me get a part of this, Jim.
Yeah.
Let me see this. Okay. Quickly, on the setbacks issue, that is a private matter that does not involve the city. That is a private setback issue that resides on older plats, that that's something that the development entity is dealing with in title work. The plans that they've represented to us meet city requirements at this time from a setback perspective, and that is all that's within our purview. If there are private sector issues with it, that will be between the private parties. It is my understanding, and staff has not studied this because it's a private issue, that there are a number of buildings that built in that vicinity that have been there a while that also don't meet that private setback. They were built over those lines years ago. This is a longstanding thing from a long time ago, but does not involve the city. It has to meet our current setback requirements, which it meets.
Is that requirement, please?
Zero to 10 feet. Rec forced. The next is the tower cranes. The only thing that you're approving is not swinging the boom over any adjacent property, but you're approving it swinging over your own right-of-way. And sidewalks are involved in the right-of-way. Other properties that it swings over needs permission, but I do need to remind you that this entire block is under one ownership entity. And while one building on this block is, or well, it's multiple buildings, one complex, should I say, is not involved in this project, it is under common ownership. So that permission would need to be granted by the current owners. But the city is granting no permission for that. That's between, we will require, when a tower crane goes up, that those permissions are all in place. Last was ingress and egress for existing complexes. Staff has worked tirelessly with this project and the development group has been open to limiting kind of the tough nature of construction in the area. With all construction, we're going to upgrade water and sewer lines, not we, they are paying. There will be some closures or some one-lanes open or some on-street parking closed off. That's normal in the course of construction, and the city could have to come in and do its own project and do the same type of closures. The city engineer has been clear that you will only have closures while you're working on these specific line upgrades. There's some storm sewer work that has to go on, to work on Janelle, Thomas, and Cox. All of those things will be done in a limited fashion. And ingress and egress to any other affected complexes is going to have to be maintained. We can't block access. People have to get to and from where they're going. And those are things that staff does every day in connection with developer. Is there a time or two, sometimes we don't get communicated to properly? Yes, and somebody gets out there, a sub shows up, and the project manager didn't know, and they start work. Once in a great while that happens. We do everything we can, though, to manage that. So all of those things are done, and this development agreement is written specifically. The difference between this and a nearby development is the sidewalk on Glen will remain open with pedestrian protection for the vast majority of the project, but they do have to get in there and actually build a new wider sidewalk with tree wells and other things, so there will be a temporary closure. But there's not a two-year closure of the sidewalk on Glen. We've done everything we can to keep it open and safe. It'll be covered, it'll be lit. All of those things are all in here. And the developers are funding all of those things. The city is not funding any of this.
Will the notices be public? It says in the development agreement, you'll be a two-week notice before any closures. Is that going to be public for the neighboring properties?
The two-week notice has to do with making sure that we're not getting notified at 5:00 PM on a Friday, oh, by the way, we want to shut this down for the next two weeks. That's to give us notice to make sure we can coordinate with our greater staff. We also internally go through a process that you don't see. A lot of closures don't happen when people want them to because I review them, the executive director of Development Services reviews them, the city engineer does. And if we know we have events and other things going on, sometimes we make them wait a week or two until we get to spring break or until we do something else. So we coordinate that behind the scenes.
Will it be available for public consumption, though, so that the neighboring folks can know, I can plan in a week, we're going to have closures here if they need to make alternative plans?
So when we learn about the closure...
And then we reach out.
We send it out to all, through all of our media.
Mr. Buston, does this development agreement have anything to do with the ability for this project to go forward?
Not really. I mean, this project can be built where it is by right. And it can be built rather difficultly, but it can be built by right. What we are doing is, as we have done with the other projects, making sure that the impact of this project is at least considered and certain infrastructure is increased at the cost of the developer for doing so. If without this development agreement, developer could build by right without doing the things you see in that development agreement, enhancing the intersection, putting a light at the intersection, making wider sidewalks, a variety of things that they could do, right.
Any other questions for the city manager and the staff?
Yes. Yes, the statement says that long-term closures of sidewalks, traffic lanes, crosswalks on Glen will and shall not be permitted. What do you deem long-term?
Two years, sort of like as Across the Street has done for Mr. Huff's development.
So if it's closed for a month, they can do that?
A month is kind of a long time.
By mask.
Yeah. I mean, every situation is different. Now, how long it will take them to close, to widen the sidewalk in a certain area, it may take, you know, two, three weeks, may take a month. Just depends on how the weather is and how they can get. But the whole idea is to get the, leave the sidewalk open until they have to do work on it, that we are requiring through the development agreement, like the widening. Then if they have to bring in, they may have to close down a lane of traffic because they're bringing in something, equipment or something other than that. But again, Megan, I don't believe there's any, what would you think would be the longest time?
Well, I'm going to defer to Scott and Allison, who will shake their heads at me, but there's a couple of things, which is the installation of the sidewalk, Glen Avenue isn't flat right there. That will take some time, as you saw when the sidewalk was adjusted, even with our own project on 191 College, why we did that in about 40, 45 days on Glen Avenue closure. When you have to rip out an existing sidewalk, repour a new one, dig tree wells, put electrical in for pedestrian lights, there's some time it's going to be closed. What we're trying to do, though, we will work with them to limit the closure of that Glen Avenue sidewalk to our lower-volume pedestrian times, such as when Auburn University's not, you know, not in August of this coming August would not be a good time to build that sidewalk. That's one of the last things that goes in, and that will likely be done in the summer prior to them opening the building. Long-term, the goal is that the city engineer will have to approve their schedule, and she will be the arbiter of whether or not it's going to be too long, or can we get a piece of it open first? And those are things, as we get with the contractor, that we have to deal with.
And one point of clarification, too. You said the crane, if it goes over the city streets, what were you saying about it goes over private property, that's one thing, if it goes over right-of-way, or...
You're approving, only approving it going over right-of-way. You're not approving whether or not it can swing over private property because the staff requires, over anybody else's property, you've got to have permission to do so. There's also a thing, though, where the crane boom, and why we don't want to get into all of this, you can't often swing big materials. There are certain restrictions that you don't, over occupied buildings do that. And I don't want anybody to think, oh, yeah, you know, everybody's sleeping in the adjacent apartment building and they're going to drop a big parking deck panel on it. That's not allowed anyway.
Okay. So if we approve this, that the crane can operate over West Glen and over Janelle on the street right-of-way, or...
Well, and I need to turn to that page. I think it may swing over Cox also. I would have to get...
Yeah, touches on Cox, yeah.
Yep. Those radius, there's a radius on each of the cranes you can see there, and that shows the radius in which it would swing. And this is the same type of radius you've seen. So, yeah, it touches Janelle, Cox, and West Glen.
All right, thanks.
Because they have to be able to pick up material and move it.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions for the staff? Okay, do I have a motion?
For approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I believe those were the only two items that were removed from the consent agenda.
Have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Some of them.
Have a motion in a second. Any questions on that? I do want to say, just before we move forward, we've got a couple of our industries that are expanding. They're adding about $28 million, $29 million of capital investment, hiring 21 people. We're certainly grateful for that and thankful for that. And thank you to our economic development staff for their hard work. So I just want to make mention of that. Have a motion in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, the consent agenda is carried.
Under ordinances this evening, we have item 9A is an ordinance placing two stop signs in the Woodward Oaks subdivision, Phase 2.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote now for the unanimous consent. Lindsay.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey.
Yes, ma'am.
Carson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9B is the City of Auburn requesting a three-month moratorium on the construction of private dormitories and academic detached dwelling units within the City of Auburn. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion in seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, roll call for the unanimous consent. Lindsay.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey.
Yes, ma'am.
Carson.
Yes.
Smith.
Recused.
Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
Andrew.
Yes. This time, we'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Don't have any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Lindsay, roll call.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey.
Yes, ma'am.
Carson.
Yes.
Smith.
Recused.
Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
Andrew.
Yes. This time, we'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing no one, we'll vote for the unanimous consent. Lindsey?
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Carson?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9C is Mary Williams requesting to rezone 1.8 acres from neighborhood conservation to development district housing on property located at 1662 North College Street. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, roll call for the unanimous consent. Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Carson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Anderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9C is Mary Williams requesting to rezone 1.8 acres from neighborhood conservation to development district housing on property located at 1662 North College Street. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion is second. Lindsey, roll call.
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Carson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 9C is Mary Williams requesting to rezone 1.8 acres from neighborhood conservation to development district housing on property located at 1662 North College Street. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this item. A public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Does anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Seeing none, roll call for the unanimous consent. Lindsey?
Dixon?
Yes.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Hovey?
Yes, ma'am.
Carson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Item 9C is Mary Williams requesting to rezone 1.8 acres from neighborhood conservation to development district housing on property located at 1662 North College Street. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any questions or comments from the city council?
Mr. Smith still... Can we ask him a couple of questions?
Yes, is the representative still here, Mr. Crowder?
I'm sorry.
You're not Mr. Smith.
Yeah, you're not Mr.
I guess you'll work.
I had anxiety as well, but Mr. Smith has a lot of anxiety. I didn't make the first meeting. I thought he was going to be here, so I apologize for that.
Go ahead.
Notice that on the upgrade, you're going to have, this is going to be outdoor seating area, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Is parking, there's parking on that road that will be, this will kind of overlook that parking, is that correct?
Yes, it's going to overlook.
And a sidewalk?
And a sidewalk. And what it does is it covers the sidewalk as well, so if people are walking in the rain, it helps continue to cover it.
Do you have any concern with anything going out into the public from that elevation onto the sidewalk, or with cars, or anything of that nature?
Yes, sir.
I think that may be...
In 2012, we have already covered, it already covers the sidewalk all the way down to that part, and that's, we just want to continue it on down. But we signed a thing with the city for a general liability policy for $3 million. But also, we have, if anybody throws anything off there, I mean, they're banned for skybar. So we have a no, no mess-up policy. So it will happen, people will throw stuff. I mean, unfortunately, there's one bad apple out of 1,000, but it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't happen very often at all.
So you've got a zero tolerance there?
Absolutely, 100% zero tolerance.
Any other questions for Mr. Crowder?
This waterfall directly, now where is this going to be, the waterfall?
Okay, where we're putting the women's room, the storage, instead of just having like a wall in a building, we know that eventually the city's going to build something behind us, and we keep hearing condos and stuff. So I was trying to think of something that would be entertaining, that doesn't require us hiring a band or an acoustic person, because then if people don't show up, then you just lose the money on that entertainment. So I thought, well, if we did a waterfall, that would be loud enough to kind of ruffle the noise that could be from people out there, but as well be really cool. And so a lot of people like to take pictures and selfies when they graduate and stuff, and so it'd be a great little thing for people when they graduate to get the pictures with the waterfall and the fire fountain. So that fire fountain will be at the bottom, and the waterfall will come down, and it's just basically going to cover that whole wall, and it'll look like stone, so it'll look really nice. That's part of the problem, I think. I feel like when we put, when y'all put the dumpster there, I don't blame you, because that was the one portion we couldn't afford in the beginning to finish, but it looks bad, and so we understand that. So it gives us a chance to kind of storefront the whole thing in and make it look nice, and we finally recuperated the money from the first part. So it's a way for us to make it look good as well, but then if there are condos that happen to go back there, they probably won't hear it as much because the waterfall will be like a soothing sound.
Is there going to be amplified music and out on this patio?
We're not planning on doing any of that up there, because we have so much entertainment and all the rest of the place. This is more going to be like for people who just want to get away from the crowd and just sit outside, and it's good because you can look forward and you can see the campus still. So, and when the stadium lights are on, it's just, it's an awesome view up there, so. It kind of is like a perfect, just, it's all working out, if, you know, assuming we can do it.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Crowder.
Thank you.
Questions for the staff? Any comments from the council?
This overhead thing, was it going to impinge on the city right-of-way in terms of that sidewalk or roadway at all? I saw some strange looks over there when he said it's going to overhang the sidewalks and all.
Doesn't appear to.
Okay. If that were to be the case for us, would that be a problem, or would we have to mitigate that, or is that a discussion we'll have with the owner?
Yeah, typically, if there's a right-of-way encroachment, we'll know about it, and there has to be an agreement entered into, essentially a liability-type agreement. We do the same thing for balconies on multifamily projects.
Thank you. All righty, anything else?
And it would have to come back to the council.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, so we have a motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same.
We've got two abstentions, Mr. Griswold and Mr. Dawson.
Item 10A2 is Cole Williams requesting conditional use approval for a parking deck on the Auburn Bank property located at 100 North Gay Street. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion is second. At this point in time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council on this particular decision, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, take the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A3 is Allison Frazier requesting conditional use approval.
One second, Mr. Buston. Hold on just one second. What'd you say, Jay?
I'd say...
Okay, there was one abstention on that vote. Just wanted to record that. I apologize. I didn't catch it. Yes, sir, Mr. Buston, go ahead.
Item 10A3 is Allison Frazier requesting conditional use approval for a community center, pool, and public park on the Lake Wilmore property located north of 737 Ogletree Road. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval?
Second.
Have a motion is second from the council. At this point in time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record.
One walking forward, or everybody else walks out?
Fine.
All right. Hello, I'm Dave Moore. I'm at 640 Elizabeth Drive, Ward 8. There's two points to this I'd like to address. Number one, I'd like to express some concern with the staff's assessment of the conditional use referenced to safety of the access of this facility. I don't have parametric data, I don't have a foundation of which to say it, but fundamentally, I think there's excessive risk by having this main entrance be the same main entrance as Ogletree Elementary School. And accepting that risk is potentially going to get somebody killed or hurt at some point in time. So that's, reference to conditional component of that, that's the issue I have, and request the council consider that entrance as potentially an excessive-risk entrance when you look at this. The broader thing I want to address, and this may not be the purview of this, but I welcome your recommendations, is when I look at this plan, the layout of the plan, and I look at the Parks and Rec master plan, there are some incongruencies.[1257.26] Number one, the Parks and Rec master plan says that aquatic activities are growing at 84%, and the second-most demanded activity or facility in the city of Auburn is an indoor pool, an indoor splash area, and what we're building is an inadequate outdoor pool, that's only gonna be used three months out of any given year. If this is a high-demand activity in Auburn, we ought to take a look at creating a true class facility that can accommodate tournaments, competitions, and all the things that were recommended in the master plan, and I have them here, but they were specifically itemized, and that plan is something that the city wanted to do. The broader strategic piece of this is, I think we ought to relook Lake Wilmore, and also take a look at the Society Hill project, between those two, you're going to invest 16 to 18 million dollars, and take a look at that, and do we really need more baseball fields? But what are we really going to do, and potentially, there's another revenue-generating component that allows Auburn to grow in a way that it's not going to grow? Frankly, when you take a look at this plan, it looks like we're just clusing some of the things we already have in other locations, and putting them there, and we're actually putting them down in a wetland, which is a mosquito zone, why don't we bring it up towards the fire station, and take advantage of the elevation? And other observations such as this, that I would request, we relook the design plan, and I won't go through all the other itemizations, but the other final risk, I think that the city of Auburn ought to be aware of, reference the archery range. It sounds like a good idea, what's the liability to the city the first time someone takes a projectile in the back? And so, that's gonna happen, and I think between these two major facilities and the land opportunity we have, I'm not opposed to the development of any of this, I'm just saying that potentially, we take a broader look and combine these two, and see if it's really what the city of Auburn needs, do we need that many more baseball fields, or do we want to enhance the lacrosse presence, which the Parks and Rec report says we want to do? Do we want to enhance, create the opportunity for a swimming venue that could bring in revenue and generate something for the city? So, that's the part two of this, and I'm not really sure if it's apropos for this discussion, but when I took a look at this, the only other recourse I see that occurs, I'm not under time, but I'll try and get off you the stage here, was a design, an administrative design review team, so once the conditional is approved, from what my understanding is, it's gonna go through an administrative design review team, and then it's off and running. Now, admittedly, this, the first time I looked at this is when I saw the Planning Commission sign, and that's when I dove into this, so my knowledge base is pretty shallow, but I would like the city council to consider the risk of dual-use of an elementary school primary access, and also, take a look at the broader strategic opportunity we may be missing, because once we invest, and once we build, we've lost this land. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, David, for coming forward, you know, I agree with you, we do need a competitive aquatic center that's indoor and outdoor, and if you've been to, or paid attention to any of our council meetings recently, or been to them, you would know that the idea of a pool, and an indoor pool, is something that's been widely discussed at these meetings. This is all born from a public-involved strategic planning process that took place, Mr. Buston, four years ago, five years ago, three years ago?
Well, it took place over a number of years...
Number of years.
And was just finalized just about a year ago.
But it started, I don't know...
Three or four years ago.
Yeah. That, there was a consultant hired, there were public meetings, public discussions, and a five-year Parks and Rec master plan was adopted, that we're beginning to work on, and the council's heard me say this for a number of weeks here, but at that time, there was a health club that was out on East University Drive near the mall, and that was considered in our inventory of things that our citizens enjoy, participate in, and facilitate their therapy and exercise, and so, when we looked at what we wanted to do with an indoor pool, it was put in year one. Frankly, I'll raise my hand and say that I've been the one jumping up and down, saying that indoor gym space is something that our community's been lacking for a number of years, and one of the primary purposes of this community center is to add two full-size basketball courts, that could be four basketball games going across court, and our children and adults in this community desperately need that space to participate in the game of basketball, and the young ladies who are playing volleyball need more places to do that as well. So, it was all put together in a very strategic plan, we do want to build a first-class aquatic center, we do, I do want to see these competitions that are held in our neighboring city happen in our community as well. We've got a location picked out for that, but right now, it has a municipal complex on it, that we have not found another location to move that to. The council is all agreed by head nod, and I think by understanding where we are in a community with losing our indoor pool that so many people use, that as soon as we can find a location for our environmental services, and some of our public works infrastructure to move to, that we'd like to take that property over at Boykin, and create a nice aquatic center that will value and benefit all of our community, and have indoor and outdoor, and potentially even therapeutic uses as well. So, that's where we're going with this, all of this was evaluated and vetted through, I'm guessing, some kind of data collection, and listening to the public, and trying to determine, what does our community need, how much does it need, what is our population gonna be, and where are we lacking? That doesn't mean that it's put in concrete, and we can't ever adjust it or change it if we don't need to, but I did want you to let you know that there was a lot of thought, time, effort, debate, discussion, that was put into the plan that we put forward, and so that's how we got here. Now, the discussion about the entryway and the safety to that, I've never considered that, so, Mr. Buston, is there a way we could respond to that at this point in time?
We would look at it, any concerns like that, we would definitely, definitely look at it, right now, what you are voting on is conditional use approval for this use on this property.
Anybody else on the council, Wes? First of all, the public hearing's still open, so is anybody else in the public who would like to address the city council on this? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, anyone on the council have any comments or questions for the city manager? Seeing none, we do have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 10A4 is James Adam requesting conditional use approval for a ice vending station on property located at 1791 Shug Jordan Parkway. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this conditional use, and a public hearing is required.
Move for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second, this time, we'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, is there any comments or questions from the council? Okay, we ready to vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10A5 is Brett Basquin requesting conditional use approval for an automobile dealership on property located at 114 East Veterans Boulevard. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval, and a public hearing is required.
Move for approval. Second. We have a motion and a second, at this point in time, I'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, any comments or questions from the council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 10B is the fixing of costs for weed abatement at 923 Holmes Avenue, a public hearing is required.
We have a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, we'll open the public hearing, if you'd like to address the city council, please come forward, give your name and address for the record. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, any questions or comments from the council? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We have one item of other business this evening, item 11A is Proof of the Pudding, requesting a special events retail alcoholic beverage license for equestrian events on February 29th, 2020, and March 7th, 2020, at the Auburn University Equestrian Center, located at 1235 Wire Road.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any questions or comments for the council, I know this was brought to us late, so is there anything you'd like to ask the city manager? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Here are those, all the items we have on the agenda this evening.
Okay, at this point in time, it's an opportunity for the citizens' open forum, if you'd like to address the city council about anything on your mind, please come forward and give your name and address for the record, and remember, you have three minutes in which to speak. Who would like to be first? Yes, sir.
Mayor Andrews, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Herbert Walter Dinmar Jr., 412 Opelika Road, apartment 111. Two things, first, I would like to thank the Honorable Connie Fitch Taylor and the Northwest Auburn Task Force for the Valentine's Ball on Saturday of this past week, it was a great time, you all should have been there. It was a sight to behold, and I just wanted to compliment her on her efforts for speaking out for the people at Northwest Auburn, and using events like the Senior Citizens Ball to remind everybody of how important that community is to Auburn, and having lived on Opelika Road, I can, you know, I don't, I'm not as involved in Northwest Auburn as the citizens there, but I've grown to know them a little bit more, and I think to thank Ms. Taylor for her leadership in that. Secondly, in response to Mr. Parsons' announcement on the Legacy Museum, I had an opportunity, along with a group from Mosaic Family Church, to visit there on Sunday of this past week, I will tell you, it was very moving, and also, you may not, there's so much stuff there, that you'll have to make more than one trip, so be aware of that, and note the importance as far as our history is concerned, just being African-American History Month, I think it's very important for people to know what that Legacy Museum is about, and also, one of your city employees had a chance to go with us too, whose name I won't mention, and also, as part of that history, I'm reminded of another part of history that I will be witnessing on my birthday, I hope, next week out of town, is that the same place where the basketball team's supposed to be playing tomorrow, but the first African-American to graduate from that school is gonna be honored, in two special ceremonies, including naming one of the schools after Mary Frances Early, and I say that to say that, you know, we need to do all we can to improve relations with our academic and athletic rivals, as well as each other, in our community relationship in Auburn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you commending Connie, and Connie, thank you for what you did, I'd like to hear a little report of how it went Saturday.
Well, I want to say this, thank you, Doctor, for the recognition, but I think he was there, and for the first time in the history of being a council, he is a great dancer, believe it or not. I could not believe it when I seen him on the video, I was so busy, I didn't see him until I saw the video, and I walked up to him and said, hey, I didn't even know you danced, so, but it was awesome, and I think everybody enjoyed it, the seniors really, really enjoyed it, I think they enjoyed the dancing more than they did the food, they enjoyed the food, but I think they enjoyed dancing better, they, it was old-school, so, they did a Soul Train line, and they did every dance that they used to do, so, I mean, I even enjoyed watching them, to tell you the truth, but I'm just, I'm just outdone with Herb and his dancing. I see him walking all the time, I see him walking, I know he can walk, but I never knew he could dance, so, but, yeah, it was a great event.
Well, congratulations, you're to be commended for putting that together.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak to the city council? Yes, sir.
LB Jackson, 61814 North College, I'll need to ask the mayor a couple of questions, and refer back to his diversity, cultural and diversity committee, but I want to bring something to the attention of my history, as you guys know, that this is African-American Recognition Month, and we've come through hell and high waters as races of people, but on my Sunday mornings, and late Sunday evenings, something happened in my life that spurred some real serious interest, and I hate it to have to listen to this on Sunday, but I want, I want you all to listen. (singing) Freedom, oh, freedom, oh, freedom over me, and before I be a slave, I'll be buried in my grave, and go home to my Lord in his dream. Now, my Sunday mornings at Mount Moriah Baptist Church, during that time and that era that those songs were sung, we were fearful because of what might happen in terms of bombing of a church, we had someone go under the church, search, because bombings was taking place, racial tension was going on in Montgomery, with the dogs, and et cetera, and et cetera, and round about that time, there came an era of freedom of choice. My parents chose to send me to Auburn High School, where there was only six or seven African-Americans there, during that time and that era, there was great tension there, there was uprisings and other things going on, there was a cross, late one Friday night, burnt in my front yard, as tall as I am, there was a cross from some of the students at the school, that felt like we shouldn't be there, so, council, you guys are a unique group and organization, this month, I would have expected, Mayor Anderson, you have a...
Anders.
Anders, you had a vision of a diversity and inclusion, I'm gonna take a little bit more time, I'm gonna let you know that.
Just a little bit.
Okay, just a little bit, but it's us, as two different, basically, cultures of people that have helped to make America great, because land was given based upon African-Americans that was being used as slaves, so, your task force, to bring the community together, where are we today on that? Because somewhere in there this month, I would have thought that we should have something recognizing our public officials that have set on...
Well, that's a great idea, Lindbergh, and I hadn't thought about it, you know, so, I mean...
I mean, it's never, my father would always say, you know, it's never, ever too late to do the right...
I appreciate you bringing it to my...
Bringing, to do the right thing.
Absolutely, so, thank you for doing that.
And because, may I finish?
Yeah, you sure can.
Okay.
Since you've got extra time, you go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. Well, you know, it comes, ideas come from us communicating, and as you guys will see, Bob, I appreciate you inviting the council down, because that's something we need to come proxy with, and Brian Stevenson will say that many times, if he watches YouTube's, that we need to become proxy as a community, in terms of communicating, not just at election time, but during the times before it gets tough, and it really gets rough, we don't need to wait until something happens to bring us together, so, I think that this council, Connie, I'm gonna lean to you, since you are more so representing the Northwest District, to help us come up with some kind of recognition for our public officials that have served, not just those that sit there, but we've went through some tough times, and those people, as you stand here every other week and give recognition, those people need to be recognized, and I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your listening, is there any questions?
Well, let me just say this, the Northwest Auburn Task Force has been working on, doing an Unsong Hero Day, to recognize past leaders in the community, and our plans are to maybe start something in April or May of this year, we just got to get together and find out which hero that we want to recognize first, so, it's not that we have overlooked it, because we have talked about it, I don't know if you was at some of the meetings, that we have actually talked about having an Unsong Hero Day, so, when the time comes, you know, I would like for everybody to attend, as a community, but, just like they have a band day in Opelika, so, that's basically how we're gonna try to focus this thing, but it has been talked about.
Sure. Look, there's been some fantastic African-American leaders that have served our community, and I, you know, when I think of your daddy, and Mary Brooks, and Mr. Sam Harris, and Mr. DeBro, and Reverend Dowdell, and all those people that have come before us here today, I'm sure that the conversations were harder to have, and I'm sure the anxiety was larger, and I'm sure that there was more consternation and difficulty in making decisions, and so, evaluating that, and coming back and recognizing that, Mr. Jackson, I think, is certainly worthwhile, and I look forward to working on some kind of plan to do that. I was very fortunate today, I went to Auburn High School, and participated in their diversity and inclusion, their local high school group were getting together and having their, I think it was their monthly meeting, and it was awesome to be in the room with those young people who were representing a lot of nationalities, and a lot of interests, and a lot of religions, and what they're trying to consider and do, and some of the initiatives that they're contemplating at Auburn High School, and they've just gotten that started as well, so...
Right. Well, you're commended by me for even thinking about it, Ron, my classmate, your predecessor, and I, we went through it together, so, we just never was able to really see eye to eye on that, but with you taking it under consideration, that's a great step in the right direction.
It's considered. Yes, sir.
Let me just add this also, even with the Unsong Hero Day that we're talking about, we don't want to leave out any minority group.
That's right.
Okay, I like to focus on not just the African-Americans in Auburn, because this is a diverse community, so, you know, if anyone have names of, you know, different minority leaders that we should recognize during this time, we offer that, you know, we accept that, and we want to not just focus on one group of people, so, any minority, because there's, you know, when you talk about diversity and inclusion, that includes any diverse group to be included, in whatever it is that we are trying to do, so, and I don't want to separate a group of people, so...
Bring us together, right?
Yeah, trying to bring us together.
Amen, and I want to, I just want to say...
Bring us together.
You didn't get to see me dance, but you'll get the first dance.
But I appreciate that, I might be dead and gone, but I appreciate it.
Who else would like to address the council? Okay, seeing no one, is there a move to adjourn? So moved. Mayor adjourn.